Do we follow away from what you said? One nation, under God, indivisible, with the repeating addresses for all.
What's the sales tax?
Twenty percent excise payment.
Excise, two and a half. Sales tax on vehicles is four.
Do you want to hear corrections for the minutes or are August 3rd you have it?
Is that Memorial, like, say it on the right rule? With the public comment?
Yeah, it's on the number four.
Four, okay. Twenty-four or four?
Four.
Okay.
You've been invited by any chance?
Uh, uh-huh.
You know, I went by it, but I didn't notice. I love you, Billy. I love you.
And then I go by it, I can't remember what it was.
I didn't notice.
It wasn't last week, it wasn't the week before I went by it.
And this is, I would notice that part, I'm not saying.
I thought the shrine was less large.
Yeah.
It seemed like he took some of the stuff away, but it was still there.
Second reading of ordinance number 130. Ordinance number 30 and ordinance number 22. There's only ordinance of our county as established by ordinance number 10 and all of them is there too in accordance with the provisions of chapter 182. Nineteen sixty-seven, this BCI, and then it's the, uh, whether repeal for all resolutions of ordinancees in conflict. Seeing one from the public to speak for the court. The second reading is where we call. Is there a motion to appeal by Charles Center? Is there a second? Example? A little couple. Uh, nine. All right, all right, cheerful, it's going. Good morning, everybody. You ready, Marty? Cheer.
I finally had the chance yesterday to take a look over the whole, or the template ordinance that First Planning District sent for the, uh, there were a lot of stuff. Everything in there looks good to me. All we should have to do is just input our county-specific stuff and annual accounting. I believe we had originally planned on letting it to two facilities in the uncooperative parts of the county. That's in there. The one difference is, uh, First Planning District was suggesting a $5,000 licensing fee for the dispensaries, I believe. When I was originally talking about it, I had proposed something less. That's up for you guys to decide what you want to roll with on that one. Otherwise, just plugging in our county-specific stuff, the ordinance numbers and stuff, I'm not sure if you could get start the process on that. You said we needed to debate on it?
Well, we should, um, so we can get our notices out, that's what you guys needed to do, is set here how many, and then, like Dylan said, and, and the amount. Because if we need to do planning and zoning first, then we can do them both coordinated together. According to this.
Do we not have to also decide it has to be so far from, you know, schools or daycares or whatever?
That's in the zoning one, yes.
Okay, so that we don't have to decide now?
Well, you should, you should decide that today, and if you want Sherry to come up, because it refers back to your local ordinance. And that's, that's purpose. But, like, for the legal standpoint, it looks good for my, so it's just getting, even.
It does written, but it, uh, specific comment.
Put, put in the specific county stuff and setbacks from sharing.
Do you have any thoughts on setbacks? It sounded like the article had a two-fold, they were trying to make it extremely difficult. It had setbacks, so.
So, in superpowers, that could be done. And more so on a city level it could be done, as far as the incorporated, you know, uncooperative parts of the county. I don't know how much stuff you're actually going to look into.
Yeah, you probably would, yeah.
I mean, I don't know how many people are, you know, running daycares in the world, or.
Yeah, they're doing quite a bit, yeah, an issue for us. That's the way I feel about it, yes.
Is that your prescription, Martin? I was going to ask, I asked that question, and, uh, seeing as though it's still, uh, federal. Well, I think the drugstore has any, actually, federal regulations are like using something that they would be violating.
Yeah, that, that's why pharmacies are, you know, yeah. That's why they need to be separate.
But to your point, it's, it's, it's nothing you do within a pharmacy.
Yeah, I'm saying, it's like prescription, it's not like you can dispense to anybody.
Where they, people might waste it, you dispensing it a little bit.
Yeah.
We're going to have two different ordinances, one that just addresses here. Medical marijuana? And the other are, I mean.
Well, until we have an answer from the Supreme Board on the recreational stuff.
We're not addressing.
It, it doesn't really pay to have anything on the books. Until, yeah, before you get an answer.
They do, like, Dylan, the paper said they would be out by October, it's good.
And as far as recreational stuff goes, you can regulate it the same way as the medical stuff, we just have to make even minor tweaks.
Originally, they were able to, two years ago, I don't know, I think, wait, no, the only thing I remember was the medical. I think the dental doctors would, you could call them, you.
I, I think it was a little bit higher than the liquor licenses, if I remember, and I can't remember what it was, but I did fore.
Our liquor is 1,200.
So it's probably fifteen.
Fifteen?
Fifteen, is that what you guys are, you think that was what was proposed, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think. If everything's so low at fifteen, are we encouraging, you know?
But we only have two, the whole county, correct?
Somebody else coming in at another county?
And that doesn't limit anything, cities do. Um, but in the uncooperative parts of the county, it's limited to, and only two operating.
And then five, but, but you said five, and all of them.
That was there.
And that's on top of the state's $5,000, so we, that's a pretty big, not to crack, if we, for legitimate businesses, that's.
And that's on the lower here, guys, this decision, I didn't know, you know, First Planning was going to throw out a number, but I threw out fifteen for. And I know, like I said, some other counties are going a lot higher, because their liquor licenses go for a lot more. That's up for you guys to figure on, figure out. Apart from that, I don't have anything else to say for you guys, if you have any other questions, or anything.
Got, got the letter from, from Don that, uh.
That's nice to hear.
Legal there was, Vaughn, you see that? And your name on it, so I figured you were jumping up and down.
And thank you, Dylan, and those are the times he called, and so. Common sense prevailed on that, so.
This time, I think you missed it.
You guys have a good one.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Morning.
Sherry?
I'm, I'm just here to be a part of just listening on the ordinances of the marijuana issue. I, a little late, and then I was going to be here for the reading of the second hearing for this stuff, but you've already done that? Because I was.
Yeah, we had it at nine oh five, we moved to a public comment.
Okay, so then, do we need to do anything, do we need to?
Do you want to, do you want to talk to Sherry a little bit about the zoning one?
As long as you're here, so you can pick that up, about marijuana, right?
Yeah, I, because I'm, as far as the zoning, we have to refer back to the zoning ordinance, and I know Sherry's got had this, and I think she's got a chance.
I mean, I just, we just need to make sure that we get it in the zoning book by the date that it needs to be in, so we need to get those publications and all that kind of stuff in, otherwise.
But you have to do some setbacks, too.
Yeah, and whatever we want to choose to do, that would be something that we would have to.
It's the one with, okay, so the one with the zoning, the zoning is the, is the one with the green? I can run copies for anyone here.
Green's yellow.
Yellow is the, is the ordinance after the zoning or?
Sure, so it's this whole packet, it's towards the back, okay?
Mine's yellow, so.
You leave it.
Oh, that's my one?
The one that's got all the yellow, definitely green in the back, too, so. This one's from. Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Towards the back, it must be.
I got red one way in the back.
Yeah, there's a, all right, red one way in the back.
Yeah, I got mine.
There we go.
There's a green one.
The red one's way in the back.
Be ready, Tom. Thank you.
So setback in all real operation?
All right, I think, the point is, uh, Dylan, the, uh, probably isn't really mad, we're not going to be affected by what you do there.
He didn't, like, understand, like, split the maps of all of them.
Yeah, they, I, I assume they're.
Of all of them.
Right.
No, we can't do any mishaps.
Well, I'm very close, Michael.
Can you do this?
I'll be handy, if ever.
Well, I just. I'll come here for you, sir.
Six oh one, and I have another class to him.
Do you have, if you have suggestions?
I, no, I don't, we just need to make sure that we have it ready to go for you guys, so it's all ready, and we need all those requirements.
So, this is just generic, so you haven't looked at ours only to say?
We don't have any.
No, but, no, what section is going in, or, you know, so on and so forth, anything like that, have you seen any of that?
No, because we need to see what's going to happen here, because if we're doing another ordinance, if, if the licensing ordinance comes before.
So, we're going to do the zoning first.
The zoning first?
Yeah, yeah. So if the ordinance number thirty-one, it'll be the ordinance number for the zoning one.
For the zoning one, with one on the green, and it's going to be thirty-one, and then as amended of the zoning ordinance upper up, it's, you know.
That's what I'm talking about, they need to, that's going to be the day that we're.
Right, and so Don just said that that's going to be thirty-one, because the one we brought us today today is going to be thirty.
But our ordinance goes by articles and sections, not chapters, you know? That's what I'm saying. To amend chapter two or three, blah, blah, blah. So we have to relate that to article and section.
I don't know what, when the documents say, or, or.
Yeah, yeah.
People.
But I take it far, because I.
Yeah, just.
Is everybody required to be in a highway commercial district?
I would recommend that, yes, because that's what they are recommending.
Is this on, on section two, or are we doing a thousand feet? That says required separation distances.
Where are you?
That's on the, be on the second page? In the yellow? Okay, uh, my device, my, yeah, my.
So, you can't just go, so we will give it not less than a thousand feet, cannot do less than one thousand feet. So are we going to go back further than that, or are we going to keep it at a thousand?
What are, what are ours, like, this is, it says? Five hundred? See, I think it was in, in, again, that was Dylan talking about the city, but it's all the same, a thousand. Feet, they, they, you said there'd be, you should, they put a dispenser. But again, Dylan said that's not going to fight us.
Well, in town, you know, that's, you know, a thousand feet up in the country, it's not, it's three waters.
Yeah, why not, why not five hundred, you know? Again, like you said, it's, it's not like you're, you're selling to the general public who's going to go lay out the front lawn and go, wow, and start to sky.
So a question to arise, what would, how far back is the peanut bar when you do that licensing, like, damn, do you have, do we have restrictions on that? On any kind of bar-type thing? I don't think we have any kind of thing either on ours either, so if we would do.
Wait, wait a minute, no. I think you need to go to Article 12 Highway Commercial District. We've already got setbacks and things in there. You need to make a special exemption, or something. You know, it talks about permitted use, we, we know section two, law number two, permitted use, we need to add that in, you know? Medical marijuana, this thing, you know, uh.
Some, some paragraph A is specific to a public or private school. And here, there's nothing else that I can say. So, can we, can we say a thousand feet? All right, well, schools are gone.
Bit past, I don't think, bit, bit.
Just so we can move on, right, that, that's going to be a thousand feet.
Are you off on two, eight, nine?
Yeah, two, two A, two thousand. And then two B, cannabis dispensary shall be located not less than flying feet from, uh, flying. I don't know if that second one is referring to existing, reported a date, little cannabis dispensary application. Others do not have to set additional separation distances, they have the ability to set separation distances from other uses. Such as churches, residents, public parks, libraries, other areas, other cannabis dispensaries.
If you go down to the bottom, that, that B, it talks about the separation distance results in the provision of a qualification of a cannabis dispensary with the following separation distance, meaning contrary to state laws, so those have to, or they don't state laws. I don't think we want contrary to the state.
The whole person's state law, then why do we here have to have?
Because apparently we have the option to change this.
So then read C.
But if the state laws, but for example, state laws has a thousand feet, we can't say five hundred.
Well, we can, we can, we can, we can.
But state laws are a thousand, so we, we could say two thousand once again, state law.
Which also, you know what that is, before you can plug in those numbers, you know?
So C says exemption from separation of requirements.
That's just, we can waive that. Whatever we said in A, in B, is, you know, exemption. We waived provided.
You can be, by number D.
I think so, I wonder if we can't plug in a thousand feet there in Sherry, and then you could get some clarification before you return to it.
Yes.
What's that second from A?
I would say they have to be specific here, that church, school.
But just only, since companies do not have to set additional separation distances, however, they have the ability to, so if you're tired, you know, we just established that the distance up here point number A would be a thousand feet.
But, but A only refers to public or private school. B refers to if we want to restrict it from churches, residents, public park libraries, so, and if we do, we have to miss those.
But do we care if it's? Should be weighted a thousand feet from a church or a public park or library?
I think we need to check their taxpayers.
What about a daycare?
I mean.
I think we can, or.
Yeah, I mean, there's farm places that have daycare, rural daycare.
Yeah, like, you know.
You know, like, or, by the Nelsons.
The Nelsons, and, you know.
What are you protecting them from, is that's what I have issue with, are you protecting them from, uh, someone walking in with doctor's prescription to buy what's legal in South Dakota? I don't know why people have to protect it from that.
Just a lot of extra traffic, maybe, and maybe just people going out there, you never know in today's world, what's, what the scenario is.
Again, it would be, you would just then.
And I value the street, you know, to use it, and you.
But, but again, it'd be like going to the pharmacy, and you get your prescription, food in the parking lot, and taking the pills they just prescribed you, and drinking out a glass of water. I, I don't see what's any different, if one of this, that, I understand what you're saying about how they can't sell it, and the reasons for that. The state of South Dakota is saying it's legal, uh, I don't know why it should have to be hiding in the back of your house to be taking this legal drug that has.
But it also says companies do not have to set additional separation distances, but you, you can.
There are some rural churches that are still active, and and residences that we're talking about. And, and perhaps the daycare facilities, maybe, I, I guess I would, I would advocate at least a thousand feet, and maybe more, so you wouldn't have somebody coming in setting up a dispenser right next to me, who, I was running a daycare, you wouldn't have a setting up one next to my house. And a thousand feet is really not that far. Quarter mile. Probably ten miles.
Less than a quarter of a mile, or, or, my house is thirteen.
Fifty-two feet.
And we bring in a thousand feet, is my clar, clarifier, Bill?
Then what, was it going to be all of the below? Which would then be the churches, residents, public parks, libraries, state, district, and A. Isn't that, I, I was, I'm saying this, you have to put a thousand feet from A, and then put a thousand feet on possession, because that's not the case.
But a library, we don't have a county library.
Not rural.
Not rural library.
So just our churches, residents, and daycare facilities.
Other cannabis dispensaries, so we can.
Two, who write next to her, you're terrible.
Do you want parks there too? Public parks?
But we're restricting.
It was hard to leave, but, yeah.
We're restricting this to highway commercial section, correct?
That's what I would make that recommendation.
So, so it's parks and that, so permitted, you know, use, or conditional use? Right, so I got it. I don't think it really have, but I mean, pretty close to it, you know?
Recreational vehicle sales and parks is in, in there.
Yep, under fourteen.
Yep.
I mean, I, yeah, that, district, but it could be cops.
I would, I see, churches, residences, and daycare, so it's the rest of the.
Sounds good.
And other, and other facilities.
And other cannabis.
Yeah.
So we're going to strike public parks and libraries? All right, and hours of operation?
I think.
Dylan gave us an example. In the against comments, fifteen hours of operation a day per week? How many is that, about seven days for hours of operation?
I don't think you want something like, for, today, or, that, I think we need something.
I don't, come on, there's still one left.
Six, six days a week, a day per hour?
Six days?
Seven?
Monday, what's Sunday?
Monday.
Saturday? Six days a week? And Monday for seven? No. So, so. Normal business hours, eight to six, we're in.
Eight to six, or are you going to have a little longer? Are we going to have, are you going to have a little longer, or are you going to eight to six? I'm just thinking.
People get up, will they have time to go there?
Yeah.
Do you have a plan here?
Yes, we have a plan, and there's one, you'll, of our, eight, but you can short the hours if you want.
Then that, that would give them that time frame, if they want to open at ten, and, yeah, until seven, I think, or something like that.
Does, does that have to be correct?
Oh, it's got to be operation.
Yeah. Well, we have to have.
We have to have a hearing.
We have to have that first hearing and stuff. Number seven, the zoning official is authorized to issue building, issue for that building and use or county's dispensaries subject to the following. So in order for them to be able to, they can come in, get that permit application, and then these would all have to be checked public documentation to say that they have all that stuff before it would come to the larger approval. Right?
Right.
Come to the board of adjustment for the zoning, the zoning board of adjustments for approval.
I think it's the third one. The third page?
Yes, it is.
Chapter seven.
Number seven. So I bring it to the zoning board of adjustments, and then we could always defer to the county commission board. I'm going to say this again, just make sure that it complies with our highway.
Can you bring yourself a little bit down?
Would you be, would you be advised about this, that first district before we decide?
I would give it. I would, I will go downstairs and I will contact you.
Yeah.
Give this cover sheet paper. In our article, it's going to be Article twenty-six is our definitions. Article eight. And Article, they have Article five definitions adopted. But ours should be, our definitions are under Article twenty-six.
Article what?
Twenty-six. On the same page, just down the row in that.
You want to go to five?
Yeah. Yeah. In our zoning definitions are under Article twenty-six. So we have to add that to Article twenty-six, these definitions.
Do they use Roman numerals in that?
Yeah.
So we just strike that out right on the stage.
So this would be in the definition section, change with the power. So we're amending our ordinance for Article twenty-six and our article number two, I don't think that would be effective.
All that in red is how we alter our existing.
So that goes into public notice as well if we amend, amending our definitions for amending the section of prohibited uses as well. Anything that they got here, step one, step two, step three. Amending the permitted use.
And that is.
Just within our.
That is all on this, these two pages both true.
It's already in.
It's already in.
Doesn't it? Red, these goes in by the way.
Yeah.
Yeah, that doesn't have to be published.
No, it's, it's just all like, it's going to be a regular thing. These two pages. So for example, step two, section prohibitive use is, is going to be under Article twelve, section twelve oh two, prohibited, prohibited uses. So that part's going to go under. Prohibitive uses. You know. We don't, it's not a permitted use, we're adding a prohibitive. So that's Article twelve, and then we go like section twelve. You have whatever. I think. Yeah, we need to come back to us with the actual article and section, so.
I will go down. We'll definitely, we'll work it out with, hold up this meeting, we'll work it all out, get all the documentation and bring it back to you. When's your last agenda meeting, Kim?
We've done about noon with Kim.
Kim is on the patients this week. Peter Delk from Article twelve.
Is it just these first four pages that are being published?
Well, we don't have the first four pages would be, would be published, right?
So we can do that without any additional explanation from sharing.
Well, we have, we have to, we have to send, we have to send the hearing first.
Right.
We can.
Obviously, as far as being logged into our existing zoning, it's necessary. Obviously, it doesn't.
But I think we need to have that public hearing date set.
Yeah.
Well, according to this, it's in county development ordinance. And we have your public hearing notice published. And a joint hearing on information and county. And then the second, we need to publish ordinance. So I think we need a document somewhat, or not?
Well, first, yeah, we do, but we also need to get the public hearing set up and get that notice in the paper for what.
And that has to be by August twenty-first.
Right.
Is published by, so we have to have it ten days prior to that because it's going to have to be in the paper ten days.
By August twenty-first, public hearing notice is published. And then we will have our joint public hearing and the first reading on August thirty-third.
I'll get on my time list and I will be back up. All of that should be, I'll read it up.
I stepped in the water coming up this week. I had to go down for some of the business. I did step in after time, says, are you guys on schedule for? You know, this, so he said, I don't know. He said, well, I was thinking we could get another step. So I sent down an email about that. Did we get caught or didn't we?
If we get the, the notice in the paper, the notice is just going to say that we're going to have this hearing, so.
Yeah, but so you publish it, somebody comes in and says, I want to see copy of the proposed ordinance.
Right, and that will be due, well.
Well, we need to be working on that sometime soon. And we can either have that completed.
We just need to get the public, yeah, the notice, get it to the paper.
We'll be fine.
Yeah.
You have the application for LTR also on date.
Did the uniforms come on Amazon or?
I was involved.
Well, what's on the list, which must have been, what's the?
I haven't even looked yet. I got a Tom Hori look at it.
We have an application for off sale from LTR, you're sorry. Were there any comments, one letter or another from the public?
Any comments or anything?
The application is accompanied by a check of two hundred fifty dollars. Need discussion, one favor, say the same thing. Go say no, motion carries.
Do I believe you want?
No, I haven't. Now, we're going to leave out that traffic or what, or that's.
That has resulted in traffic. See, Pat had put down a bunch of, you know, go to here and then skip and go to here and skip and they just did it all until they ran out for it. Then they did the county with fire from that intersection up towards the bridge. Yeah, so it's, it's nice road.
So it's nice of them.
Okay, thankfully they damaged the road, they did no stuff though. Like that deal on fifty you talked about. Yeah, that's, that's good.
Five thousand miles, you know, that's where I'm down.
Well, they went towards old Highway five, they probably went. Maybe.
Six miles.
Okay, maybe two thirds of the way. And then you come to Highway five and you go, right to go and try, and left was the fever. And they went down there probably another mile or so.
To the east or west?
To the east. Which was.
Yeah. Oh, torn box.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was.
Okay, I guess we're going to do a three minute recess. I think we should. I know that we're going to do the complete review of the budget, but Bean Pat is coming up in another fifteen minutes. If you want to ask him about his department.
Sure.
And since, and the budget, get these hats again. Subject begins on page fifty-one.
I'm just going to write. I think tonight's going to be one night. Unfortunately, something on Wednesday night, Thursday night, Friday, something four wine nights in a row on opening the handles. What do you find on their lead?
Donuts.
Donuts?
Ah, donuts.
See, I just, I mean, it's, it's hard to say, well, you can't, but you don't have any money. It's, I'm sure.
You made a good point when gone to the. Whatever you call it, it's gone, the money's gone, it's gone. I think if actually it is, you know.
Yeah, you can't do that. That's why I just like the idea of, if you give it to a money guy in the bank and the money's gone, you can't do that.
I was just going to ask last week to get, you know, outlook.
I thought about that too, you know, I did. Or, or do it be bonus to me?
Not so long, a bonus or?
Maybe you kick up the bonus a month for what we did last year, something more substantial. We, we just looked between the landfill money and that first COVID money. We had about, let's say, twenty dollars.
And these were bonus on the week.
It was late.
We ran out of money. Yeah. Begin this, now we got this, you have to go on the second session.
I don't know, sure it'd be nice. I bet not.
What was jumping first in that?
Ways as, yeah. Wages, yeah, it's, yeah, great.
When we're talking about this, we're talking personnel, right? So it should be the executive session now? I mean, we're talking about.
Are they waiting?
I'm giving up there. But we once did this a couple of years ago, okay, everything has settled now. More people home, please don't have everybody. So you're on the list, but did we adopt our people, did we adjust it? We got any one? Executive session?
The budget?
Yeah. We've gotten under that, we've gotten about.
Discuss the wages and benefits of people?
But not, I think. I think if it's a specific person, we would, in general, I don't think you want the executive session.
I mean, if that's.
If you, if you have. You have some contacts in your ranks who's the same person. It's your call for most, if you get the word, you go and all like that, then we do. Whatever you want.
Sherry was asking me that, so when she said that, I mean, they already said something about staff, she mean. They wanted to have the rezon. Very commercial, I suppose. She'd be like, hey, it's just prior to application for handles. Or they can't get a permit and then say, well, now I want to rezon and say, well, if you want to pass the. Rezon, you, they got a permit.
Yeah.
What, fired, that's the rezon prior to application for.
Yeah, I forgot some of the, one of the things in the checklist.
Yeah, and they said they thought they needed a date.
I thought they located.
What's the number, they just want to be fired and things.
For a budget?
You got it out here now.
Well, when you get there.
Who? Oh, oh.
Yeah, before you get there, before you get there from that, you know, they got this one here. You dress, you dress for this.
You dress and he was in house.
Yeah. Screening, security, fence, anything.
Page 11.
Well, we were just talking about some of the requirements of a. How about dispensary?
Oh, forgot that.
Okay. I guess the question came up that you couldn't, you couldn't get a permit unless you had a qualifying location. Can't get a permit in the same located area, it's not sold.
Can't wait for all Garry Sheldon's over just.
He's around every place you can think of.
Really?
There's a, there's a sign on Stilson's store that if you want to sign this petition, you can pull over to their office. I didn't look at that, but I haven't talked to him.
I thought you might have been up here.
I haven't, I haven't seen him.
So you need to go sign it, don't you?
I haven't been up here.
I thought you said you called and you went over to the house.
If you're even July, I'm up here.
On Friday. What do you want us to do, like?
For, for the funeral? Shut down? So many couple hours, right?
That's what I think they feel like they want to do.
As you did for Dean, you do a 10 million for Dean.
Different.
Oh.
Isn't it? You are the commissioner. I mean, for like, for Larry, we closed down all the offices, he was a county employee. If you read your personnel. You know, I, because I was asked that question, not by a there, by an office, and I said. We, it says in the personnel policy that we could close those for the, for the funeral. For a county employee, current county employee, so that's what I was asking.
I would say the whole court also know when you visit the offices such as the director of labor, director of utilization, because that's where they work for so many years. It's up to you. To me, it's up to me to make it. How much am I before?
So it's pretty much however we want to run our offices, is that what you're saying? Pretty much? Well, I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking because.
What do you say? If you say, close that office when you're obligating those people to go. Maybe they don't want to go, maybe they just want to go to a visitation.
So, yeah.
No, I mean, if I worked and you closed my office, I feel I'm obligated.
Well, but in the, in the personnel policy, it also states you close your office, but you have to attend the funeral. That's what our personnel.
Right, and that's what I'm saying.
I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to.
Ward off. Potential problems.
Actually, I'm gonna be gone on Friday, I've got a doctor.
What, 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 what's this matter of the funeral?
11. 10 to 11. I think 10 to 11.
So you basically shut down for all of the. You end up closing the funeral activity. I mean, it's a person doing part of the woman, I don't know. I think it's good for morale, I think it'd be bad for morale.
Where do you think that did me? Logistically, would you just close that, close that door for the signing?
It's a, yeah. And it's gonna be your Christie's.
And you're gonna be gone, so.
And.
She wants to come in and work. She's gonna have to put the door closed, right?
Yeah, you go that way. Okay. Thank you.
So they're not working yet at the funeral, right? That's not the problem.
I think that's the problem.
They have closed their office for other reasons.
I've seen them close the parade before, you know, so.
Oh, man, it's all this morning.
Hey, Ben.
I don't know if you saw this on your email, or maybe not, so. On that infrastructure meeting. That real infrastructure meeting, I gave you a copy. I think we can go on to virtual. Because we have no idea. We have no idea what we're supposed to be.
With the 3 million?
We haven't, no, well, that's.
Email yesterday or whatever.
Yeah, it's in there.
On some dock, so.
But we still don't know the process, just what, what I'm saying is, you know, we get this money. We have $68,000 right now, and I got a, I got a email from one of the county supervisors the other day saying. This is the letter that they had gotten, and we hadn't even received that copy of that township letter yet. That they had sent out to the townships. And so the guy's asking, what, what's the county going to do, how's the process, we have no idea.
Well, yeah, I, I got the letter too, it makes it sound like the county is doing all the work.
Yeah, um, Kristi Jacobson sent another email, I was thinking of it, and. It's basically to get together two different ways, if I want to get, we want to get to go to townships and go back through and try to get inventory again. Together, or if they're gonna put it all on us to go there and try to do it.
We got to, and shit to talk about.
Because they got it in the county's hands because the money comes to the county, so we're the ones that are obligated to have to do it all over again. We have to get the site, you know, and some other stuff. The inventory is not quite up to par for the townships, so they want to go back and do it all basically over again, you know, and make sure all the structures and.
Would take a whole lot of time.
Exactly. And it's time, they said, now, May, let's see.
May 22nd.
Was it May, uh, April, May, it was either in March or May, of next spring, they want all the inventory done. And they said, well, it'd be better in a dry fall to do it, and then next spring, in a wet spring, so, you know, that kind of thing. But that was in her letter the other day that I read.
Yeah, and that's all in that package that I provided you guys, and I provided Pat.
Yeah, our township book does, we don't think we have any structure to be qualified.
Well.
We're not doing anything.
And I think, well, unless they're really small, yeah.
What about any 16 feet or larger, 16 square feet or larger?
You got small ones and that, then, then you wouldn't have to worry about it. But then they go to that, and you got.
And what is 16 square feet, what would be a?
Four and a half for diameter and all that else, so. But then, well, that has its criteria as well. Yeah, we gotta. Us trying to find time to go to every damn township and try to do all the inventory all over again, after the inventory has been done. You know, with a lot of these structures, it's just, I don't know.
I was at this, I was saying, why do we have to pay them townships?
Well, if, if, if the county's supposed to do it, the county should get a payment.
Well, we got $68,000, and that is in a separate fund, and that is for that.
The coordination of the project.
But it's, but the grant application process, we are still waiting for guidance, is what. That's my beef, it's just like this million dollars that we got. Here's your money, but don't do anything with it, because we haven't told you how to do it yet.
But it's gotta be spent by a certain time.
Oh, God.
And then the others.
So, but that's in that package that I gave you guys, so.
That their inventory and everything. County or township, the last name, personally, who got the inventory coming, so it's my engineering law. If you were to have an engineering firm like Harvard, I may come in, I would cost it all about $60,000 to go do a lot. You asked the whole thing, we said, this money came out to all the town, all the counties. None of that, that $3 million doesn't go very far, and then next year, the $3 million is going for construction, so it's a lot of work that needs to be done, and we don't know where it's gonna be here.
Well, after August 15th, we will be provided a spiral bound booklet. After, it's set up for Sunday, so.
And then I think they're coming out with an app, and they're coming out with some sheets that we're gonna be able to get to go buy.
Yeah, that's all, that's all in.
Yeah. So there's gonna be, you know, the criteria that we'll have to go over and kind of jump into that later on.
I guess my point is, it was kind of frustrating to get a, a letter from, you know, from the county, when we hadn't even seen that at that point.
Oh, yeah, townships, they, you know, they get, jumping gun, and they're all excited about getting this on. The rest of them, they're all in the mind, like, trying to get a grant.
Okay, you're, you're looking for someone else to do all the work for it.
Yeah, just, you know, this money, you realize this money don't go very far, and how would we price out $2900 yesterday and $28,000, well, it's damn expensive now.
28, uh, nine foot, how long?
54, yeah.
So there will, right now, the first, our, our Lake Region District is looking at, Kathy McNippel from Brown County is looking at. Um, setting up a virtual meeting with just our Lake District, Lake Region District. She asked if Monday, August 23rd would work, I said yes, I haven't heard if it's going to be a setup thing or not. Of, then we'll have a virtual. Meeting for the auditor, highway superintendent, commissioner.
As I understand it, if you don't get inventory, then they just won't call back to you in practice.
Please.
And it's almost as, how much, how much, what, like, decide who looks for the inventory, so why don't the townships do their own?
Yeah.
And they do that inventory already, I mean.
Since a few years ago.
And the 20 there, they just tweak in, have to tweak in and do what they already have. And I think that's about all. Once, you know, we get paid to the township supervisors or somebody that puts somewhere sometime and figure it out, I guess. And then I think all it is, is there's a checklist, once we get the actual checklist, they go down and say, okay, this is what you need to do, and you go and follow that checklist, from what I hear, you know, so you probably got it in your mind. From what Kristi Jacobson had emailed us, you know, there's gonna be something we can check off as we go and do it, and then that way you get all, everything covered, and then.
Yeah.
You'll be eligible once you do that. So that's gonna be ongoing, I guess.
They didn't let you out on their road path?
Yeah, they did.
They didn't let you, what, they skipped you to this one continuously till they.
Well, I walked that whole mile by Piver down to the worst stuff, and we went. Do the worst stuff that we could, that couple, there's a couple miles in between, but.
So how, how many miles did you actually get in the middle of your?
Six.
Six, okay.
It was just under 5,000, 4,800 and something like that. It was really good, so. Okay, so if you guys kind of look this up, maybe down, you know, next week, you know, we'd have to, we'd have to kind of sink our teeth into this thing a little bit after we had more of that good from the top side. You know, then we gotta try and go through it, I guess. There ain't anything else on that. I'm gonna get field court for the month of August. I have rigs at 245 for diesel and 289 for ethanol. And CHS was 252 for number two diesel and 275 for ethanol, so. Vigs would have it for the diesel and CHS would have it for the ethanol gas, so the motion on that will be good. I do have that, uh, approach permit that I forgot to take and bring along last week. It's Lisa Hamel and David Claypool, they're the ones that want to approach for a new home, for a new, new house. Section 36, township 122, range 47, and we will be putting 60 foot of 24 inch in there, and then they will pay 20 foot of it. And go from there, so I'm hoping by the end of the week or beginning of next week, we're gonna go and tap on that, so. Might have to do a locate, I'm gonna check it again this afternoon, but otherwise, that's the criteria, and we gotta get. Might have to do a locate. I'm gonna check it again this afternoon, but otherwise that's the criteria and we gotta get it put in. So we'll be doing that as soon as we can. I have the time a little bit right now for most of the week, but we're gonna be, they don't need it top closer to fall, they said. But I'll get it done as soon as we can so they can have it done. So it's the motion. The first half will be fine because, um, we're responsible for one access. So, um, that's right off the county road rally team over here at Big Stone Lake. And like I said, they sold a bunch of lots to the south that they own that property on the second page. And it shows there's gonna be a whole bunch of housing going in their development in the south.
Is that where you go up to?
They've already adopted, shared a gamber. I think there's some issues going on there, but that's not my problem, so I guess whatever. She's probably discussing, yeah, there's that road that goes up to the west, just a little bit south there. And there's one house up in there and then that's the property that's right to the west of it.
Yeah.
That's kind of where.
Is it, is it the block two where, where the housing?
No, on the north part of that, right where your Fender is up a little bit.
Well, that's where the approach is.
Yeah, that's where approach is.
The housing development.
Yeah, that's all gonna be in here on the south. And that, I think, it's kind of a big pasture land and goes down the hill. That's forty, all the housing.
Forty-two acres.
I mean, drug a building in.
They've already sold a bunch of lots there right off Big Stone Lake in the west. Already sold a bunch of lots, I guess, and it's gonna be developed, so. And then, uh, the pavement marking, we're discussing that. I did get a little, um, traffic solutions. And in order to make sure that, like, old thirty-four here is getting done with all that new pavement and the tripped ceiling. And the lake has got almost three, almost four and a half miles, almost that stretch up there that needs to be done. And then there's a little bit up in the hills, uh, backlands that's kind of treacherous up there that I'm probably gonna do. And then on County Road four that goes to the south, we got over five hundred cars a day down there. And that was, it don't look bad in some of it, but the south part, some of it's pretty bad again. And then, uh, south to the valley where we did a lot of paving, we made that around the curb. So I was trying to do the least amount, but it was still gonna be twenty-five dollars and twenty-four a gallon because of what it is there with the state. Like, if we were to add state term money like we normally do or strike, you know, we usually pay about nineteen, twenty thousand. This is twenty-eight thousand eight ninety-eight is what it's gonna be to do about this down there. While I told them fifty miles, but it's gonna be less. It's probably gonna be closer to, um, forty-some miles. So just gonna be a long can there and then right back. So we're grooming the chips now today and grooming Sutie Hollow yesterday. Cause they haven't fog sealed and they have many chips sealed in the March County because they couldn't get on. But they were gonna be going and then as soon as they get fog sealed through there, they're gonna give me that price. I already had a estimated price on that, which would be three, four thousand bucks or something like that to do that fog seal. Well, that's all gonna make it. Yeah, we got all of our expenses except for the chip seal or chip grooming yesterday. And then we'll wait till we get everything done and then we'll have to proceed to show that to be efficient when we get outside. But our cost.
That would be pretty.
I have more to them now, but I don't have the grooming, the cleaning yesterday and all that and the fog seal yet, so. Excuse me?
Do you have any issues with that that you worked out of?
No, I worked out a little bit. It's just, you know, it's a little bit shy in the edges, but we did everything up through to the top. We only had one truckload of oil, you know, and then we were gonna move to the county with the distributors. So we had to, we couldn't really go to the very end of the top of the hill where it had been fog sealed and chipped before, which ain't been earned, because I wasn't gonna go put three hundred more gallons anti-on when we gotta have a damn truck to go to the county. So we ended up on top there and even it out. Chip did and colored good, so. So that's the arms. Yeah. It was just two hundred miles and the park and everything will be done by Jenson's and stuff when they do March County's deal. So they'll come up to meet up where ours is and they'll probably be in the park and do other things, but I don't know with that. So anyway, that center line was gonna let you know it's gonna be, there only is a twenty-eight thousand dollars. And then if we do it less, it'll be according to county, huge, so. And, uh, they do Brown County and then I'm assuming he's doing state stuff over here. I know he's gonna be doing the Willmop projects down on the state road. So I told him, well, I'll be handy for us because then, you know, we do, the county roads north there. He's gonna have moving and a couple times. He got that in the bid. Everybody asked him one or two times.
Is it, is it small with independent guys can get the paint, but the state can't? You think just, it'd be just the opposite? The state would have some priorities?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just not even getting paint whether he had more or less before. I don't have.
I mean, something to do a lot of different projects.
You see, both of them that's had the bid through the last three years, they've had a problem with COVID when it started. And then they had issues with ownership and people working there and some kind of stuff, so they didn't even get it. So there's something going on there, I think, other than what we know about just.
State trying to get out of business?
No, I think the state, they always have their own trucks too, but, you know, these Omo come out of Iowa. They're independent. They come up here and they go south for the winner and do all that. So, but they didn't dig this because of that, so that's all I know about that. The only other thing I have is the bridge right up north of Sutie Hollow. It's a bridge that we're gonna take out this fall or sometime.
Like that storm when you have that?
This bridge here, um, had a lot of gravel on it and it got really beat up. And it was starting to cave in on the deck. And when we took the gravel off, it was one I'm gonna put culvert in anyway. Um, it ran into driving lane. It's just beat all up. So I got culverts. I'm gonna order it for a bath and try to get that replaced. So we got the barricades up yesterday. I don't want nobody driving on it. A county pickup can probably get by with it yet because it's only fourteen ton bridge. And people have been driving on it with trucks and tractors and everything else and they got so beat up and all that, I had to close it. So we got it enclosed after yesterday night. And people can still get around by harnesses and harnessing that, but, um, everybody that needs to get around can get around. So once these culverts come in, we're gonna replace them. We'll use that money that's in the special bridge fund yet for those costs, but that's something that's.
How many culvert you want to do?
Won't take two. It'll take one day to get them both in pretty much once.
You mean take two culverts or?
It'll take two culverts, yes.
That's fifty, fifty thousand.
It was twenty, uh, twenty-six thousand nine seven, almost twenty-seven thousand for those two ten gauge, um, culverts. They run out forty-four dollars a foot in that I would get. So they ended up putting those in because of the situation. So, um, once they come in, um, we're gonna talk a lot and get that done.
Bridge, the bridge ran itself in twenty-one?
Yeah. I have a bunch of culverts in there.
You gotta see if somebody scraped gravel off of each of those planks or they just looking at the planks.
Yeah, and you don't want that much gravel on these bridges. They should be taken out.
They just did a spot off this mid, they were just looking to see.
Yeah, so, you know, that's another one. Anyway, they'll be ongoing this fall.
But the culverts too.
Yeah. That's a long structure. You can get by without having to get a box out for it. So. It's only half the day then. Now, they did finish the tanks, the, the tank work on the ground. Where these tanks take down within the next, or, you know, but, um, we don't have that bill yet, so. So that's all done.
No surprises?
No.
No surprises?
No surprises.
That's a good thing.
So it went well, so.
We need a motion to approve the approach program. That's regulated by example second by. But yeah, only favor signal number seven.
All right.
Yeah, this is approved.
Nothing really decided. It's just for your approval only. And then, uh, what I do is keep it on file and then, um, you know, go back to, so.
Uh, we are reviewing budgets today. And in your department, Pat.
Yeah.
We were asking for an increase of eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. The year before, in twenty to twenty-one, we increased it four hundred and seventy-five thousand. And now you're looking for an additional eight hundred and six.
Yeah, with everything else involved. Well, with the debt services, it's up a little because we'll have, uh, two main vehicles to pay for debt services. The main thing that went up was I wanted to go up to five hundred and then to get supplies and materials. Is because we're just not keeping up, but, you know, lots of roadwork with the three hundred miles asphalt and the two hundred miles of gravel. I mean, we're stuck yet. Still have, you know, fifteen miles of chip seal and only about six, six miles or six thousand, six thousand ton asphalt in there and it's just not, it's not covering it and, you know, and getting the budget. So I'm gonna go up a little more with materials and lots of five hundred there, um.
Can you explain the special bridge fund? Uh, you know, eighteen, we got budget zero, nineteen, twenty-one, budget zero. What is, what is that? Previous, you know, mom expended this year was nine hundred and eighty-one thousand.
Uh, you'll have to ask Don how she was thinking that because what it is is all that special bridge fund money was started out at four hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
So, I mean, we, we didn't have any expenses in there. We, we just, you know, until we started, we, we got that money back in, what, two thousand nineteen?
Two years ago, yeah.
And then, and we're having to do a supplemental. We were waiting for this Eastman Bridge to get done. So it hasn't, we haven't been supplementing there yet. So we will be doing that once that bridge project is done.
See, once we get all the bills done, you'll make a motion, you know, I have to get all this money back into that special fund. Because to me, I don't know, it's Don's bill, all of which she wants to do it. If it's a separate line item, that separate line item would have that money in there, four hundred, seven thousand. The reason why it's so much over is because we have to pay upfront to the state out of the money. Then they pass eighty percent back. That's why it's at nine hundred thousand dollars, um, in the hole. But in reality, I get all this back and we're gonna be giving our eighty percent back. And then we'll end up with, you know, a few hundred thousand back into that fund. But we will have to make sure that I can transfer money back to it so it gets covered. And it's gonna end up all said and done, we will still have in our special bridge fund. Should still have two, three hundred thousand dollars in there because, you know, we have to be really exact.
So twenty, twenty-two, you're requesting to spend two hundred and fifty thousand of that was in that special bridge fund? I mean, I'm.
Right, right. All that's gonna have to be spent by twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four. And that has to be zero by then. And so what we're planning on doing after the bridge is going to Eastman. We'll have to figure out how we can get that back.
Okay.
Try to get that back to a positive number when we're all said and done. And then we go from there. We'll start taking two, three hundred thousand out of that to do these culverts and small structures to get that money out.
So really know that, that you don't have specific projects for that. It's just gonna be a little smaller.
I had five or six of these bridges already for that, what it teams up the rest of the money. And this bridge we just discussed was one of them. So now we're spending, uh, three hundred, uh, two hundred. This twenty-seven thousand plus excavating plus, you know, one argument, that's it. And then we'll go from there. We put that project as a separate project. This money goes towards that too. And then the next bridge will be the same. We'll just keep pulling that down. But the problem is, it looks like we got such a big deficit with nine hundred thousand dollars in the hole because of that. Because we had to pay the state first and then we go right back down.
I wonder what you have with that money.
And we're getting eighty percent. We're getting eighty percent of that bridge grid for, for nine hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar bridge. But it doesn't look good on paper right now until you guys get all said and done and make a, a motion to, to, uh, transfer the money.
We'll get that transferred. We'll, we'll supplement it.
Supplement it.
And then we'll take, we'll take the cash out of that. Pat right now has the two separate funds for cash, so then we'll, we'll do the cash transfer to the regular, regular cash out of that.
Will we likely reimburse from the statement for your measure?
Oh, yeah.
See, the state's been reimbursing us that whole way.
All the way.
So we've been getting that money back, Don, yes.
But they're getting nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars is.
So.
Beginning and they only owe us like a hundred and thirty-three thousand.
And what the whole deal is, is if this would have been like, if Don could put it in as four twenty-five oh one and had that four hundred thousand dollars in there at the start, you wouldn't see that. See, and that's the whole problem, you know, it's in there like that. But Don has to do it her way, you know, according to how she needs to do it. So hopefully, as we all said, Don will have two, three hundred thousand left in there, so we can really, uh, smash it out.
Okay, my question is on rolling bridge machines slash equipment. We increased it thirty thousand, um, losing?
Yeah, um, we have to trade the Bobcat out next year right away, which is gonna be really cheap. It's probably fifteen, twenty thousand dollars to boot. But we're looking at that or if we need another piece of small equipment, you know, that's what we're looking at. Usually if it need that or, um, my pickup is getting toward, we need to get another one of those down the road. Um, so, you know, that's the only reason why I got a little extra in there.
We got that pickup, man, that's.
It's a fifteen and I got a hundred and thirty, forty thousand on it right now, but, you know, we got five pickups we've been working on and it just keeps adding up. The thing that expires me is the repairs. Um, my repairs is getting used up again this year and I had put a little bit more in there, put a hundred and ninety thousand in there. But, you know, we're down, we're living down right now at forty thousand dollars in repairs. I don't even know if we'll make it in five months. And that's just trying to keep everything underneath the peel. I mean, it's just one thing here and one thing there and it just keeps adding up, you know, so. But otherwise, everything is pretty much in there. The, the salary was up a little bit because I was hoping maybe that would go towards a dollar, um, dollar an hour raise. That went up a little bit because I was thinking, you know, maybe hopefully we'll shoot somewhere and add it in down the road. But, um, you know, we got, guys and everybody's talking about this and that and agents and nobody wants to work and short help and. I mean, it is what it is. Most places are right now are over eighteen and a half dollars starting. I got a guy that wanted a job, but he wants eighteen dollars an hour. He's at Class B and I'm like, yeah, you know, I don't know. I didn't get a fly really, but, um, we only started out, we started out at sixteen dollars, you know, so. But it is what it is and I'm not going there right now because I'm just, you know, putting that number in there, so.
It's weird.
Yeah, it's kind of the worst there. Otherwise, everything, I really didn't want to go up higher other than materials for supplies and materials, just for the long work. You know, I don't know. Beds might go up to seventy dollars a ton instead of sixty-five. I don't see that. The Seraki and, and my two miss Naven staying there tight. And I think with the oil on that acid really gone up, but maybe. I don't see them, yeah, I don't see them.
Seven dollar low.
Propane is gonna go up to the state, you know, up over a dollar, fifteen to two dollars, you know, but. But that doesn't, should not have been there enough if you're on the oil.
Have we heard anything about the health insurance program this year at all?
Plus the COVID money, when we had that meeting going on for that Lake Region meeting. I mean, the doctor, the COVID money is only gonna be used for water and sewer and this kind of crap. That doesn't mean diving rich on, you know, if you can't use it in the winter. I mean, I don't know where you're standing with that, but hopefully this big trillion, how many trillion dollars bill is coming out.
One twenty-two, yeah.
That we might be able to get some.
I think, I think you get the town money out of that. I think it goes through.
Cause the state had emailed this morning. I looked at that real quick and they're talking all. our leaders and my situation now, they're talking about this bill gonna pass, you know. Some companies are gonna get something, but how much we're gonna get, we don't know.
I suppose all based on population, but I'm sure we're gonna get much, much like we got with this COVID, so what do you think?
Right.
Sixty, seventy million dollars maybe?
What does it come to do with a million dollars with the COVID money when they're on Sanders, they're gonna use it for water and sewer.
Yeah.
Sign on. Yeah, so I don't know much about it, because I don't know about what the COVID money is, I don't, but.
Interest out the bit that we're.
Plus the pressure with the non-taxable land, I mean, you know, the.
Trying to keep the islands out of time, and even several, they use ours, and we're trying to work together on stuff, and your money's not there, and so.
How about if your truck to say like a hundred and thirty thousand, if you got a new truck, you keep that one and just kick them on loops on the bottom?
Yeah, we have two on the auction, we'd like to trade off, put it down in the auction, with all this money, just gas, just all my money. Right now, we're not breaking drums, and, uh, slack adjustments on it, the front, you know, staring bad, I don't know, I don't know that, and it's just.
How about those ones we watched from the state a couple of years ago, they still run pretty decent, where the one we had for new board, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, all of them are, all the other trucks that run in Brooklyn, yeah. We got two newer ones, we got two newer ones in the two there.
One that's great enough, and one that go way back.
Yeah, they go way back, way back, from eight, ten, first cab, second cab. Wee Jen, came out with the cab, or just filter re- Jen.
Can they be half ton, or they gotta be three quarter ton, or?
What are, what are you talking?
Pickups are something.
I'm sorry, yeah, that was, turned out well.
So would, would they find rent peace or lesser?
They were like six grand, I think, and we got more, and then we ended up doing one more, but it's smaller work, but otherwise, you know, they're digging for something.
You still have the, the surplus?
Yeah, well, it just had surplus out here now, we got new form, used form like from the DOT. They put a Ford thing about there and this and that, but I didn't see what the price sounds like, it's just how we log for some of the vehicles out there. And you can't really beat a half the state, the state is only like twenty-seven, twenty-eight, probably dollars brand, you know. You know, reorder them out of the state, so you're better on it than the brand new from the state did, than going out and getting used one from.
You want this, you want the state to have three quarter ton?
Yeah, three quarter ton, like I have.
Yeah, King Cam.
Three quarter ton, saying, send you cab.
You got that for twenty seven grand?
Yeah, I had it last year's price, it was like twenty-seven, twenty-eight dollars. With the spring in liner and everything, and sideboards, I mean, you're not sure you're gonna make that. Thirty, over thirty thousand dollars, we're gonna go on the state.
You didn't even give them a lot?
Well, they hadn't been out last year, so I haven't.
I spent with the shortest people, I think they're sound.
If we were to stay in that next year, do it, go ahead and order it, we'd be waiting a while, I'm sure to get it. The other counties that have ordered, ordered one or two back, a few ones, I'm sure they're waiting, but I haven't talked to anybody else, how long we do it. Because everybody heard about our, these, no one said we're parting out with one trip, they're waiting for it from China to be able to start it, you know. So that's what's going on in there.
Our weed department too, their equipment is just.
Oh, yeah.
If we push that inventory, we can see if we're.
One ton of. For the weed department, yeah, them lights are not good on that spring truck, they, it's melody's on there, so they're running. I talked to them about it, and I said, riding on the road, and they're not good, them guys are not, you can't even hardly see them lights, you know. They got a couple of big things, and you can't really see them. We got the L E D, L E D on our little patch lights, are there, and they're not good at all. But anyway.
But that should be a simple, it sure did not.
It's a simple, it's a simple, good. But yeah, if we look on surplus, if you keep something, you're gonna look on it, and actually know what's on it, maybe you know something like that would work. So I have to do it, I guess. No, not yet, I, I'm not getting it, I got to get a little bit, and then we're just stripping that somehow, right out before you get there. And every time I go there, I try to catch somebody there, I never see anybody there. There's, I don't know how many times I've opened them, I'm just getting them down, I never there. So.
You said you were rushing that, I'm sorry, you were rushing that, Chico, you rushing Eastman yet too, or?
We're gonna get into it this week, yeah, we're on ten now, and we go on there, so it's like tomorrow and next day.
We don't know if they put any of it.
Yes, boom, they'll, yeah.
We got a few one?
No. We got the news in the shop. Excuse me.
You don't know if they put it, I don't know, that, you know, it's fourteen.
No. Not yet, they're gonna do it, and I got it all straight ready to mow, and then once I mow it, I have the veil, take this, run it to the blade. We had to widen it out a little, because the water was still up to the shoulder, and there was no gravel, but I took it to the top, except around the ends, some people went wrong. But it still was soft, still not that good.
With your pickup, or what do you?
But it got a blade through there, it was soft, it was soft. I know if there were my pegs, it wasn't that good, but the blade was, you know, going down there, and when you get to the shoulder, it was really. So it ain't that safe, yes, but it's gonna be mowing that, and we're gonna be cleaning it all up, and then we'll get the signs up, and then we'll see, you know, if we have any gravel in the back, but. Got to, Clint said he's gonna put gravel in there, a couple of years, yeah, I know, but it never happened yet, and I know that the water was still up on edge, and I told them, hold on there, straighten out the ends because there was a big gap, and then when we get down there to go, the water's quite a ways up there was, and I just wanted to plane that off so we can get it straightened out, so we can drive across, but it's not that safe, we need to get all the signs, we need to get it all mowed, so. That's gonna be, I don't know, so. Yeah, the new blade is bad news. We got it sitting in the shop, and the guys are taking the small equipment off. The changer came, I know, and, uh, they, and, uh, my boss said the door, the door, and not really the door. So trying to order one of them is impossible, he said they don't even have one available yet.
Select the door, just not the glass?
The whole glass, the whole glass, the doors.
The door is shut, too?
The door itself is just the frame of hinges, the rest of the glass was just very poor. So it's all.
The frame is okay, you just need the glass.
Yeah, the frame's okay, the glass, but they gave it glass. Take the door off, turn it down, clean it up, put the window in, and, and, and they got the bills, so. They don't use them, yeah. We had it all ready to go in the shops until they took the windows off, and it was, and it came, I know, somehow, just fell against it, you know. Still, that wasn't big deal, so that's sitting in the shop right now. Cost me money, and everything left in the shop.
Is that Jack and Luke, they're gonna pay for that window on his paycheck?
I don't know, he didn't want us, he was talking pretty soft. First, I was scared that somebody got hurt, between the two of them got hurt or something, and then finally spit it out, because I was scared, like, well, if somebody get hurt, well, I'd be like. Nothing's cheap on there either, you know.
Oh, I'm sure not.
So.
Safety glasses, a big piece of stuff, that's sure.
Well, you know, we've had lots why up in the back windows and stuff before, and that's why we have defenders all the way around.
Yeah, this little dark door, it's checked every place. Marshall seemed, Marshall Montzola's got a lot of glass down there.
Yeah, well, that's just then, I had Dan come and look and see if he's getting some of that, you know, thieves, I mean, it's a guy who can do it. But then probably I thought, yeah, you're into glass, right, you tell him, so. I don't know, it's one of them things, you have no control, right, there's no right.
You can't operate, at least they're flying with it there.
Yes, yes, you got the other one, thanks, go ahead, you can hold on the other one.
What's your, uh, product, where you do get it?
I don't know, you know, it's nice, they said it's all over.
It's like, you know, you got a tractor, so, it's, it's expensive.
Well, fenders are over five hundred dollars, and frames and all that, that's expensive. They gotta start coming out with all this stuff, so I'm wondering what, why. He said, I'm working on that now. The duck, the duck, well, props me along his eyes, that glass. All right, thank you.
That was a new baby, it is.
We're going down to visit him this weekend.
Oh, you haven't been there?
So glad we were down there the day after this board, not bad. Just feeling good, feeling good. We had a little jar, it's, it's got, like, a light, blanket, they think, they all showed us a picture, almost looked like a fight, I think, so he's like, he's like with that around it. And cleared it up in about two days, so. But, first, first one, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's our first grandson. So it gets better now. If you're down in the Brooklyn area, so, it's close enough for us to, get down there. Hospital was real open as far as the site, I was concerned, and we wore masks when we walked in. Soon as we got into her room, where the birthing and everything, the place, they said, oh, you can take that mask off. I have a brand new baby, I better leave it on, and we took it off for some insurance, but.
Just, I was in water coming yesterday, and I mean, I didn't know if people wore a mask, of course, with the VA, you have to wear a mask with the VA, but also like more of this man eating mask, I said, if you want to, you can. See, we check for, say, if you know, sort of, wearing a mask. Yeah, a lot, I saw a lot of employees.
We're seeing a lot of guilty areas in the area now, so. Cautionous person.
You know, I think the biggest threat is, is, uh, even looking for vaccine in the water. Yeah, and so if there's been someone else who's been vaccinated.
Shouldn't be a big deal.
But somebody hasn't been vaccinated, they haven't been.
Worrying about these little kids.
Yeah, I'm hoping the schools start nothing in a couple of weeks. You look at Daniel's younger.
I know, I know, that's why I usually let it go for, for a few weeks. People's reaction when they see me fresh haircut and shaved is always like, you holding up to do this shot? I mean, you can come barely.
He's a little ass.
I was there, a multitude of hair follicles left on the top of my head should be removed later.
Small scout, you had the wild?
Yeah, it. We're at fifty-eight today. We had a large, well, I shouldn't say large, about five marshal inmates leave in the last two or three days, and then we had about five well, three or four bonds that came out yesterday, that people got bonded out, so we dropped. Which is good, because, you know, like we were talking about last week, it creates a a struggle for our tribal police department to not be able to have space with us, so it's nice to get, get down there. Couple of things that I have under new business, uh, the new jail form, jail uniforms have arrived. And so those have all gotten passed out to inmates, so all of our inmates are in black and white stripes. Just, just a change, it looks, it looks a little different, yeah. But, uh, they also, they're also moving to, uh, we're gonna do jail issued undergarments as well, uh, so that we don't have to, so that our jails not dealing with people bringing in undergarments and things like that, because we've had some issues recently with, uh, people trying to smuggle contraband in, like, a line of underwear. So it's, it's it's more, more than anything, it's something that'll make it a little bit easier on our jail staff, because they're not having to go and say, if someone brings them in fifteen pairs of socks, and they have to count them all, I'm only H N U three of these pair, because that's in their policy, and now everything will be pretty much jail issued. They've, they've written, uh, numbers on all of the garments, so just like with our jail, or our, uh, our housing, when somebody goes into a housing unit, they're issued a, a housing number, and anything that comes up wrong with that, with their room when they're checked out, we're, we're doing that through the, we're charging it out through the state's attorney's office. Uh, we're doing the same thing with the garments, so any damage, any damage to those garments, they come back damaged, that are more than just wear and tear, uh, we're gonna be able to look at those and say, well, you were issued garment number ten, and I was coming back with graffiti written over it, so. So we'll be able to do that same process with that.
Have you did that with the towels?
Uh, I don't think that the towels have numbers, numbers on them yet, probably something that we, we should do, I know we had an issue this last. I know we had an issue just last... Two weeks ago with two of our juveniles shoving towels down the drain. Those... The juveniles that we have in there right now are... Have been far worse than the adult that we had out there since I've had them out there. We've had issues with the towels going down the drain. We've had issues with them breaking the... They broke one of the... Fire water extinguishers up in the ceiling. It's... They're just trouble. Are they ours?
How are they able to reach that high?
They moved the tape. They moved the tape while the juvenile... The juvenile block is... The ceiling is shorter than those other blocks, so they're able to get up there a little bit easier. And they put the table over there. Move the table over there. Put a chair on top of the table, and all of a sudden, they were able to get up there. Are these... These are juveniles or someone else's? Uh, they're ours. One of them is going to the OC, maybe.
Is that maybe threatening the takeaway commissary or anything's happened?
These guys have been on lockdown, on lockdown more days than they've been able to move around themselves.
Maybe getting rid of one, and if you only have one, it won't make a difference.
Yeah, it does. It typically does. You know, when we were at... It was when we were up at four juveniles in that area that created the most issues. It's kind of like... We were small with everybody. If we could relate it to our marshal prisoners who still have state jams, we'd build that back to... Yes. Yeah. And we've also... We've also... That kind of reminds me, we've all been working with the marshal service on some things to make their billing more accurate when we're getting transportation for them. James is... James and... I brought it up to James, and James brought it up to them, that, you know, if we're taking two of our jailers to transport a marshal around, and we're only charging for one, and they basically sent back that we can charge them whatever fee that we need to accommodate or bring them to their...
On the basis of...
Because they meant to have... It's supposed to be... It's supposed to be two armed guards. So we're also working... James is working on finding some training. We may need to get some jail staff, you know, firearm certified, things like that, to make that process easier. The thing that we're running into is staff more often than not. And I have that under... I had that under old business. We talked about that a little bit last week. The only other thing that I have under new business right now is that Deputy Farmer, who we hired in January, took his reciprocity exam, and he failed the exam by half a point. I reached out to the law enforcement training center. I talked to three people, including the head of the law enforcement training center, and sent half a point to the half a point. So he had no choice but to send him to the academy. After visiting with... After visiting with him, he's disappointed. Quite disappointed in him. But after talking to Chad Moss Deller with the law enforcement training center, it's something that they see like pretty regular with people that have been through technical schools. In his opinion, they... What they find is that a lot of kids will go to those technical schools for law enforcement. They're able to kind of get by with that, you know, the average, without having to put much effort into it. Much effort into their exams and things like that. And then all of a sudden, the most important exam of their pending career comes up, and they put all that same level of effort into it, and it ends up that they...
Oh, sure.
And most of the... And most of the people that I've seen take that exam in the last six years pass it between seventy and seventy-five percent. Seventy percent is the passing level. So there's not much... There's not much room in there.
We'll check. Don't ask.
It has one. Yeah, it's one. There's no retake. And that's what I talked to him a little bit yesterday. I'm like, "You know..." I said, "Have you guys ever thought of..." Because I'm not the first sheriff to call him with the same problem. And I expressed it to him, like, you know, "It really... It's devastating for us to lose... To lose one for, you know, three months." But...
What can you do then?
He'll... He'll be out there for three... Or for thirteen weeks.
What can we do?
Well, I... I just called him. I got a call from L T late last week, and I called them back yesterday three times. I never heard anything back. They were telling me that they have... They may still have some room for August, the end of August, which would be better for us, because we'll lose Dylan in January. So at least we wouldn't be running into having two on the same time. If August doesn't work, it'd be November.
Can you still be off patrol still then?
Yeah. Yes. Yeah. So it doesn't affect... It doesn't affect us right now. Unfortunate thing is, is he's a great... He's a great deputy. There's just... There's just things on that exam that unless... Unless you comb through the training material with a fine tooth comb and know everything from anatomy to physiology, then you're gonna struggle.
Like that driver's test, if you don't read the book, you never pass.
Yes. Because there's just questions in there that you can't...
It would be a damn good driver to make your way through.
Yeah. It's a lot of... Yeah, it's a lot like that, so...
When it comes to reciprocity testing, does the state provide any kind of reference points that you can study them?
Yes, it does. It... They provide the training material. And I just think, this is my opinion, I think studying for some is a lost art.
Supposedly.
You know, it's... And maybe... And maybe it's something... Well, I shouldn't say maybe it's something. It's definitely something that I... That, you know, that I can learn from this, because I need to... I need to put a bigger emphasis on setting... On making sure that they're setting aside time, because it is... It's important. And he feels... He feels awful and let down, because he went to school for two years and now has to put in another thirteen weeks at the academy. You know, the one silver lining, if there is one, is that the academy will give him... Will really give him an opportunity to brush up on his skills. It's much more of a hands-on atmosphere than going through a technical school, most of all. We'll end up... We'll end up with a better deputy than what he is now, even though, like I said, right now, he's been a great asset for us, for such a young... For such a young kid.
Was he on a contract to stay for two, three years?
Yes, he is... He is on a three-year contract.
Sure.
So the only thing... The only thing that would change is the dollar amount on that contract is gonna change, because his training hours that we put in him is going to change. So...
I guess that's another thing. He's locked in for three years.
Yeah, I'd have to look... I'd have to... I'd have to look at the exact numbers, but if I can recall from what it was when I was with the city police department, it's somewhere in the range of like six thousand dollars. That's what we're looking at there. I do have a personnel issue that probably best in executive session.
But it's one thing if you got fiber tinfoil, you can scan it yourself. You got a whole cart full of groceries or something, you'll be scanning yourself.
I do, but what is it? You had to scan some... Say, "I'll scan this bag, scan this all of this." Because six bags, all put in the cart. Oh, no, you can't do that. You have to scale on that scale. And then when you say, "Okay, I'm gonna take that thing off," you hit the button. Then you can take that bag off.
You need a scales this big, a cart this big. You got the dirty duty, didn't you, Kevin?
Yep.
All right. I hope they run there shortly.
We have to go that way today to pick up some paperwork from them. Kind of get that, when they say... I don't know what the... It's grocery. My... My problem is the changing the bar after I've done what you asked and I'm changing the bar. But I guess it's nice to know that push comes to shove.
I was going to get a little of that Maria and ask her. I don't... I'm not in favor of it.
I think that's... I know... I know when Janice was listening to the meeting last week and cheer her back in a month after I'd left, she was just like...
Well, the thing is...
What do you do when you run out of people? So... And you know what? I... Yes, but... Yes, but no, I don't want to run away. It's like, okay. So you're gonna... You're gonna sleep here. I'll be right away. Still gonna... I give up, there's none. Just none in my boot, I believe, so it's... What I... What I kind of... Easiest way I can describe it to people is that, and I brought this up at the... Law meeting last night. You don't need nine months. I tell you, you really need nine more, right? And when they tell you it's gonna be, you know, when you get on the phone, you got on the phone, call my phone, there's a first emergency. You can somebody there five minutes ago. And you delay calling as long as possible to try to make that decision. The thought of it going to... Thought of going, you know, up to Watertown, and then Watertown adding dispatch. End up taking that time to dispatch and getting saved, or something like that. There's just... You know, maybe somebody that they would... They can save there if one of them would have quit.
What it costs us? How much would we have to pay for it? I don't think they do it just for our people. They're not paying someone else for it.
They're gonna do it for our people.
They would get it. I know. But it's Washington, it's... They still have time to talk about this.
Well, I... Like I said, I think... I think knowing that you have that in your back pocket, it's a possibility. I think it's important.
How they gone today?
We're not handing out the rails to say...
Getting warm out here, huh?
You have to warm. There's a freeze, so I don't know.
Any position when...
It's... Keep on sending...
There you go.
And just the increase that we use.
Forty-one thousand... They acquired the Paul... I worked with them yesterday and see them.
I just... It's gone, it's gone, great. All right, yep, just keep going.
Yeah.
We're along. Keep going.
Yeah, imagine. You don't talk about that. It's obvious that they can't even... Nobody's down in fire. Who hit?
And they're gonna lock it up? What are they gonna do?
They haven't taken yet. Good shot. You ready, Steve?
I think it's released. Or if they turn the lease out.
Yeah, lease it off.
For eight-four now.
Yeah, you got it.
Here we go, Tom, for us to get on the river today.
He's gonna have homework tomorrow.
Tom and Tom. But he and Dee are... Me and Dee.
I always wanna be on the buying at the bar. Not on the service end. Same with the restaurant. I never wanted to be a servant.
Okay. Uh, we'll pay bills. Two quarters, I can't. Other bill, I'll pay with some sort of thing. Uh, bills are paid. I guess we'll start in on the budget if somebody wants to take a chair. Is that okay?
And Sherry comes, I guess we can just stop.
Yeah.
Do I have a stamp holder?
That'd be okay, yeah. If you have some question, sure.
Okay, just not...
One, a few yellow tabs.
I see that. I hear it's a pretty much a family. You want... I mean, I'm speaking on camera.
We just stuck at the beginning. We got a question with this job.
Call up the page number.
I only went by then through it. I went to... By the time I got to fifty-nine, we were about a million five for the previous year. I, I went to, by the time I got to 79, we were about a million five over the previous year. Fifty-five.
I know where you can, five hundred thousand.
What, what did, what, what's been going up this year? Was it 1.2%?
Possibly.
Loss of the index?
1.2% was the CPI, I guess.
1.2. So the first, first one is commissioner. And the budget is for $29,000 less in point one. And historically, it looked, well, it looked like we were on pace to do about 150, 152 per the year. So are we...
So we didn't, are we 40,000 under budget for 22? We didn't, um, we didn't budget for an audit in 2022.
So that's that professional?
Professional piece. Because we're not scheduled for 2022. So that's the big difference there.
This is just what you're gonna bring up, and it seems to be more like every year with commissioners, increases to each himself, we're not the last year, we could do nothing this year yet, I don't care, I'm just bringing it up. It's like every year of the year.
I, I think it should be because some of us will be gone in a year or so. And, and, and to get people, it's nice, I mean, this compared to nothing for other counties.
None of our wages compare to other counties.
No, no, that's bad, that's bad.
I think there should be something like...
Me, I think it should be just like anybody else. Why, why would the commission ever exclude or forget the pay raise? If it's a job. Long as it's ever done, it's $25 a month, it's not, it deals out.
Whatever we do with that county, it should, I'd give them the same for them.
If we want, if we use percentages, it'd be so easy, but I'm not gonna make that up.
So what, what are you looking at then? Twenty-five dollars a month?
So I just bring it up because there's a point of conversation, I guess.
Well, no, no, it's time to do it.
But that would be, that would be my thought if we did, if we done in the past.
Because the plan is then we will make the necessary changes that you guys want to make to the budgets. And then next week, you can...
You're talking for the whole of your primary, it's like, oh, the whole of your...
Oh, for everybody. Oh, $25 a month for a person? $25 a month? Did we have a...
I was going 25 cents an hour.
Oh, $20 a month.
I did hear those, but the only, the only item I see is that it's gonna come for union negotiations and get that funded. Well, you took an increase based on this percentage. Actually, we haven't, we haven't been able to let them have that, or when we go to take it.
Well, that's true.
You got breakfast, I wanted to go remind her.
Did you do that before the marijuana?
It don't matter. Sixteen.
Sixteen.
And I don't know what that change got made on here on your, if you're not dumb.
What change are you...
For the GIS, that others?
It's at 30,000.
It's at 30, 30,000, and it was always at 15 the last two years. And the reason for the increase was attached on the backside, maybe you guys got something?
I don't know if we attached it. It's for the cost, it's for the cost maintenance of the GIS that, that we had when we first put...
For the plan, because then the plan for the next year jumped to 30,000. It was 15, and then it went to...
Into what?
Remember they were only doing this half, half what they were supposed to be?
So that's the, that's the, that's the GIS plan, you can see the current year, 2,000 point for year something on it. So the reason for the increase, I budgeted originally at 15,000, and then I seen that, and so then I...
This year increases for the...
For the GIS is the only increase.
Are you giving this all at 15,000 dollars worth of subscriptions, any chance?
Um, I'm not gonna do that, but I am going to do this web hosting and this annual, or the annual maintenance cost. Between those two with subscriptions, we should have that covered. The mark, part for mapping cost, no. The web hosting cost and the annual maintenance cost, those combined, we are going to. Because right now, we're at 5,100 dollars on subscriptions.
5,100, that's my question.
5,100, we have eight, we have 18 paid subscribers right now. So 5,100 is the 13, or the, um, 300 dollars. And then the 25 dollar setup fee, you know, that's a little bit for us all.
Start for first year, allowing a lot of people to...
Can I just break up, I'm confused. You said you were charging us the wrong amount of money for the mapping and the web hosting?
No, I put it down on my budget as 15,000 for the last couple of years and on this one. But looking at our current year for 2020, it's jumping. It's jumping up.
They're raising their cost to us.
No, this is the projected that they've always done. They just gave us a break for the first couple of years, and then now they're compensating the rest of it. This is the total package. If we add all this up, this equals that 90,000 they were talking about. 15, 30.
This is what, what you, what we agreed upon when, when...
We signed on.
Put on the GIS, and this was the...
Right, because this is not the annual maintenance cost. This is, this is the cost to buy the system, first of all.
Right, right. It looks after 2023, we'll just have these costs, like 70,000 dollars a year.
Yeah, okay, okay, I get it, okay, yeah. Yep, all right, I got it, I got it.
And so with our GIS, and we just send out three more applications, so I anticipate, you know, we should get about 20, 20 applications. And I'm not giving them a break as of yet because it's a yearly, we decided on a yearly, so it's 300 dollars a year. And so it doesn't matter when you start, if you start your subscription in January, it's still 300 dollars. Because then, no, the new year is July. You have the new year when Darren is putting this on. We're, we're not doing a, the day you, you want to do it today, I'm not going a year from today. So that's what we decided, July 1st was the beginning of the year. You told me not to.
That's fine. Others, when you're like 13, 14...
Our calendar year is January to, you know, December, and states July 1st, June 2nd. Why would we not stay with our calendar year?
Because that's when it became available, and so we wanted to get it out there, and we agreed July 1st was going to be the date. It was out brought before.
As long as we remember to re-invoice July 1st, is that, isn't it?
Yeah, and, and they'll be submitted out there, and Darren is awesome to work with. I mean, I get the stuff, I send it to him, he gets it done in the same day, everybody has activation. It's awesome. We got the flood map up on there now just the other day, so... So we're continually updating it on a, sometimes daily basis, sometimes weekly basis. When we get stuff in our office done, it gets submitted up to the GIS system, and Darren puts it out there. It's in a matter of a day or two, so it's, it's updated frequently. And the link is also on our, any email that comes to me is automatically pushed out through the return. So it's out there.
Okay, and now what's...
Uh, no, that's, I don't see any other thing on my budget, I mean, I prefer to, you know, anybody coming in with aids or something. But no, I don't have any other issues with my budget at all. Just if, if planning and zoning, if we can get him to go full time, that'd be a not, a perfect ideal opportunity, but probably not at this moment.
She can stand working part-time?
Um, she is. I, I can't say enough good about her. It, I can't, you know, I asked her to do something, and I, I just, it's amazing. She is, she is very good, so I, and I would like to, you know, in the future, she would like to have more hours, you know, but as of right now, the way it is...
When she first came in, we were getting to tell her whether she was settling in and wasn't interested in anything more than motor rock. Because she does a good job, we would want to cure that she...
Yeah.
Doesn't say, oh, so she needs full-time work, because she's going somewhere else.
Yeah, so I will definitely keep everybody informed on when she asks me whatever, so we can make that decision when that comes. But as of right now, you know, she would be, she would be open to full-time job, but she knows that right now it's part-time. So, um...
She worried about full-time, or population, or help someone?
Equalization? Absolutely. Absolutely, because I would love to have her go to school and to be the third assessor, so that way we can start this egg stuff. We've got three teams going out there.
How much money is she paying someone? Is she, is her husband, retired a couple of years back, right?
I don't know.
Not talking about, talking about...
No, but she's in office staff, you know, she doesn't have her...
Right, she didn't go off, no.
Um, okay, so I called onto the ordinance 31. I called him, visited the first district, first district, Luke is on vacation this week, Todd's on the road. He did call me back, so then he said that, um, if I write everything down, he will, I'll send it to him, which I did. He's going to look at it over his lunch hour, and then he's gonna get back to me on the way, on his road to his next appointment. His next appointment was going, he was somewhere, and he had to be in Millbank by 3:00, so I anticipated to hear from him. So this is, quick question to you, Don, is, do we have three papers? Or do we have one paper that is only our primary? Do we have all...
We have three papers.
But do we have, he, that, Todd's question is, do we have one official newspaper?
We have three officials.
Three official newspapers. So then, at that point, this needs to go into all three. He was thinking that if we only had the one official, it would only have to go into the one paper.
We have three official.
Okay, so that, that's one of the questions he had asked. Um, and then he says that the ordinance would need to be publicized. How do you normally do your other ordinances for the licensing? That's how you would handle the licensing, how you do your other ordinances, how you publicize them that are non-zoning?
We, we published the adoption once, and we published the whole ordinance once.
So he, he said to tell you that however you publish your non-zoning ordinance, that's how he would recommend doing the license part of this. Uh, so then, this is what I sent to Todd, and he said we can go ahead after we review this. He says you can go ahead and set that first date, because then the first date, we have, make sure that we have all the documentation. So I have ordinance number 31. I have ordinance entitled and ordinance amended to Article 2, Section 24.13.
Section what?
Permitted uses highway commercial district, Article 12.
Wait, 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 now, where did we have? Article what now?
Article 12.
You're deleting Chapter 2, dash, or Chapter 2...
I am, okay, so amend, Chapter 2.03 is going to change to Article 2, Section 204.13. Permitted use...
Okay, wait, Article 2, application of district regulation. Yes. Section 204.13? We don't have a 204.13.
But we're amending to add this to it, is what we're doing. So you need to put in this one to...
You don't have it. Exactly. You can't amend, so there's amending and adding or whatever.
We are going to amend permitted use articles supplemental, and articles adopted as amended of the zoning ordinance. So this is what we're going to do. If I, if I'm in error, Todd's going to fix it.
Well, not necessarily, because we had a previous one that got wrong, and we had to re-add that, so...
Okay, so Article 12, supplement regulations. So if you look at 12, you got highway commercial, that's where that is at. Supplement regulations, we don't have a supplement regulation into there, so we're going to amend to add that. And that's made to be 1202. And Article 26 is our definitions. And adopted by ordinance. And I had a question mark there for Todd to figure out, and I think, Don, that's where we put in the same ordinance as we're amended, right? 31, because we always did 30 to 30, that first part. So I, I think that's 31, and I have a question mark that I'm going to add.
Where, where are you at the...
At the very first paragraph.
So read the thing, the first sentence here. Amend Article 2, Section 204.13, adding permitted uses highway commercial district, Article 12 supplementary... Supplement regulations in Article 26 definitions, adopted by this ordinance 31, as amended of the zoning ordinance of Roberts County. So then, if we go down to look at the next paragraph, be it ordained by the Board of County Commissioners of Roberts County, that Article 2 of District Regulations adopted in Ordinance 22 of September 30, 2019, as amended of the zoning ordinance of Roberts County, be amended by adding the following section in bold and underline font, is going to say 204.13 prohibited uses.
13 or 03?
13, 204. So it's the same number as what we're amending up on top, they're just reinforcing it down here. Well, we're adding prohibited uses, because what is in the...
So, so this section is under what article?
Article 2. And so then, be it ordained by the county commissioners of Roberts County, that's Section 1202, in the permitted uses of the highway commercial district adopted by Ordinance 22, September 30, 2019, as amended of the zoning ordinance of Roberts County, be amended by adding link... of the zoning ordinance of Robert County, be amended by adding language in bold and underline font, number fourteen, cannabis dispensary, subject to Article twenty-eight. And we don't have an Article twenty-eight. That is the next one in line, because Article twenty-seven is our consecration animal breeding operation. Okay? So next, be it further ordained that the Board of County Commissioners of Robert County, that Article sixteen, the supplement regulations, adopted by ordinance twenty-two, September third of nineteen, as amended of the zoning ordinance of Robert County, be amended by adding the following chapter in bold and underline, Article twenty-eight. So then, it goes to talk about all this stuff that we're adding. So the county shall allow up to two, uh, part B is two, right?
Yes.
Two, and then on the second page, shall be located not less than a thousand feet from any public or private school. Be located not less than a thousand feet from churches, residence, daycare facilities, other cannabis dispensaries.
Can we back up just one second? On, on, on the first page, okay, where it says, "Chapter four, twenty-three," what is that we're going to be?
That is Article twenty-eight.
Okay, we have Article twenty-eight. Number fourteen is Article twenty-eight.
No.
But you refer to chapter, section, or whatever. What are you missing is a section.
So here, where, where you're talking to me, it's...
Down here, here, down here.
Okay, right, but let's go back up here to here. So this, in the permitted uses highway commercial adopted here, number fourteen, we have to put that in that permitted use in the highway, but it's subject to the new article.
Right.
So they're referring down to the new article of twenty-eight.
Okay, I, I understand that, but starting Article twenty-eight with a blank, we never had that before, so Article twenty-eight is not going to be this. And then you go into sections, where it says, "Chapter four point twenty-three," cannabis dispensaries. What, is that going to be section, uh, twenty-eight oh one, or one?
This cannabis dispensaries is going to be the title, Article twenty-eight, and anything of all these that fall underneath are going to be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, is my...
Okay, that's what I'm getting at, so this... Okay.
All right, okay. So then, back to this other page, we've got the thousand feet, and we're taking up the public parks and libraries. Then, we go on down, I don't see anything else. Do you guys see anything else? We get down to number five, we talked about eight AM to eight PM, six days a week, Monday through Saturday. All right? Officials. So then, um, be it further ordained that the Board of County Commissioners of Robert County, Article twenty-six, the definitions, um, adopted by ordinance twenty-two, September third, two thousand nineteen, as amended with the zoning ordinance of Robert County, be amended by adding the following definitions in bold and underline font, and that would leave, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different definitions that we would be adding, all right? So if there is a change in any of this, Todd will let us know this afternoon. Um, I will bring it to Don's attention, and then we can send out, send out a email to all of you on that, but then the hearings need to be set, so we can have those publications.
Would you be able to copy what you're...
Yes, yes.
And you have, you guys set dates and everything ready for this?
Yeah.
And then, I guess I have one more question, all the equalization, um, things. Would it be okay if our office closes, we're doing the funeral on Friday?
I'm just going to circulate some information on that, but the answer is yes.
Okay. Through the fact that he's been in our office for, and all three of us have worked with him. Okay.
If one? We can make it two.
We got, that's, uh...
I have a whole with the wage?
I, I maybe, whenever, I'll, like, I said, draw others, that gets it, too.
You'll just send twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars per month? For commissioners, is that what you're saying?
Well, that's just sufficient.
I'm happy with sharing the freedom, I got to buy it.
Twenty-eight, twenty-five is fine.
Twenty-five a month?
Yes.
Next chair, I think? I'm happy with it, it's... Page four, election.
I, I had a question, why, um, the election repairs and maintenance? We don't have it. Five thousand? In some years, there's nothing, some years, a little, I'm just curious.
That's five thousand is our maintenance agreement that we have...
Oh, okay.
Being...
All right.
Did we get equipment last, last year approved?
Yeah, but that was paid for.
Yeah, right.
All right.
Question, oh, if, if we had a special election thing, how does that affect this number?
We're going to end up having a special election Friday this year, so we have to happen to...
And that runs about six thousand?
Yep, it's like a six thousand, so...
Right.
So we'll have to supplement that budget, get that...
You're on Friday, is it?
Yeah. The law library, why are we seeing such a big increase to twenty twenty, twenty-one? I've got, you know, burned it over, so we're saying, you're back down to two thousand, so hopefully, I mean, twenty-one, we've spent already forty-seven, fifty-eight.
Because there were folks that came again. I mean, we're not totally, uh, for...
We still need some adjustments.
Yep.
All right, okay, all right.
Budget looks good. Page seven, treasures budget.
And you want to listen to any of that, or, I mean, it's for an extra person, or...
We've decided that there would not be an extra person.
All right.
And the rest of the line items, you know?
Back, we just want to talk about how do we get in the work of those things?
There, the girls have sent out letters or statements. Um, there was one couple that came in last Friday and paid off their ten thousand some dollars as well, so I think...
Just for asking.
Just getting the letters out, or the notices out.
His, his department's...
They've been, they've been doing it, so, I guess...
Tell us that, school.
We'll hear the success story, and then I'll hear the rest of it.
How, how the other ones are coming? Oh, yeah.
Page nine, State's Attorney of Brooklyn, Ken Loach Street.
So, then am I to assume that we are to leave Dylan as is, or...
As he requested.
As he requested.
Does that improve, can it, on deputy, or...
That's what?
Since the eighty-five thousand dollar ad, basically, we put social security... I honestly don't know if you can deny it, but I don't know if I'd pay for it either.
The word's having a mouth.
And then, I assume you're going to need more computers and... I assume they need...
He got, one guy's got to pick up a job, how many cars? You know, doing that, so...
Yeah, I mean, you could see the frustration on his face last week before, I guess, and then again last week.
Yeah, definitely, he takes on the job, but...
Yeah, the need is there, I guess, but yeah, how do you pay for it? But how do you not...
Yeah, and I feel if, what, what, if we find them, are you...
Well, no, and that was my question, too, be, if, if, ahead of myself, if we decided we should approve this one, I mean, should we also be looking for a part-time person? Because maybe you find somebody who's got a type of practice, who's not doing really all that well, and they, "Oh, come in, sit, fill in," you know, half time or something like that, that would help him tremendously, I guess. Because it couldn't sound like he, but you don't find any... But they'd have to know that some part-time might be available. How about that one point two percent, was that equal to, to some additional revenue that you have in the... I thought maybe you had a number eight there.
Actually, I, Christine did the taxes this year, although I heard...
That's true, yeah, it was an effort, but you can't initially have it say in there.
No, Christine and I, she's not, she's on an acquaintance basis. Anyway...
The other than that, the only other revenue we really have is the wind tower stuff, and we haven't got anything on that this year. As soon as could be, someone next year?
Yeah, they're projected at sixteen, whatever, I put, we, we did put that in the budget, it's under... Whatever it was that I got from...
Oh, yeah, he didn't see that, but that was put out of the coming, right?
No, what I, when I...
All that paper that...
When I used to you guys, uh, is just a million, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, which the counties...
Where do you have that under?
Page...
On the revenue side. About the revenue side. It's under, on the page two, the revenue side, number three, three, five, sixteen.
Okay, renewable facility. Okay, got it.
Hundred and sixty-seven. And that's all ours. There's some extra money, but... Yeah.
Well, and you know, maybe, we, we do have, we do have over a million dollars from what we got reimbursed from our care, so maybe, maybe we need to use some of that on some of these expenses that I realize we could maybe just sit on it, but we did get that
Could have some kind of fixes, and that's, we could say, we're going to dedicate that to, to our special audio and space, because that, that cover, one yourself, and one for yourself.
Right.
So we save some other, like, fixed things that you... Why you pick up and take the money out of there, then, then don't give as much money as was it, or, that'd be patting on...
Well, I don't, I mean, I, I guess there's extra money there, I'm saying. Yes, it's great to have, don't get me wrong, it's great to have that extra money, but sometimes you have to spend a little bit more, too, and...
Well, and I agree, I guess the thing, we're kind of waiting on it, and it doesn't seem to be developing at all, is getting the handle, we might go out to shop.
Right.
And then what we're going to do next door here with the air conditioner, we've been too, very big expenses, so...
Yeah, and I still like that.
Kind of, that was in my idea, just sort of sit and do nothing, and try to see if there's a bigger expensive...
Well...
I mean, like, what bolt needed, didn't seem to, but didn't seem to bolt grew up, huh?
Doug has been in contact with senior jail worker.
Yeah.
And they're extremely busy, shorting the...
Sure.
He said, "We could probably go buy another winter, but we didn't like that with them now."
Yeah.
So they said, "You're not in a big hurry, are you?" And he said, "Well, we'd like to have something to replace by winter."
Did we have a, a time limit on, we had to invest some money to get reimbursed, cost of the, uh, modern...
From modern jail?
Yeah. This wasn't, didn't cost, it cost ten thousand dollars for the, for the survey, and we spent some money, we had that money back, or something like that?
Re-...
Well, no, just the cost of the survey, I thought the survey costs X amount of dollars, and we committed to spend so many dollars, we got that, we got that money back. Am I incorrect? But I just wondered if there's a time limit, when you had to make that...
I'll check that out.
Because we're going to look at the relapse thing this, too, this fall, with...
So, Don, back to our... Is two ninety-four, nothing but...
Yes, that's good. Dylan came up with...
So, really, that's only a twenty-two thousand dollar increase over the previous year budget?
I think we need to probably go over some figures, what happens to...
Yeah, well, then, we can take thirty percent of this, which have an eight-type grant for...
It was a little bit short, it seemed a little more, more than eight hundred dollars.
Was he plugged in five hundred dollars for K or...
Yes, he was.
I saw it somewhere, this...
How we, we were considering, we agree what I have.
Just make sure you, yeah, there's all associated possible, first and insurance and retirement.
Yeah, because the year-to-date, that's six to six thousand for expenses. More expended, twenty, twenty-one.
Make her in.
Sixty-six dollars.
Sixty-six thousand.
Change the numbers. Sixty-six dollars.
I have another copy.
You said sixty-six thousand?
Yeah, I have another copy too. Here's a sixty-six here.
Yeah, that's.
It's supposed to be Dawn's, she has ninety-eight.
For the right, running, running down, one dentist is up there, right there.
But Dawn has ninety-eight, that's what can extend it to.
Yeah.
That's a joke.
Actually, my fee says from. Hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and six forty is what they've extended in two thousand twenty-one.
Well, did you, did you just run your sheets or something? Because this was dated July twenty-sixth.
This was dated. On this. Hundred, so.
So that's five.
Yeah, so it's a hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-fourty.
So you needed a hard to pass number for provisional today, right?
Next week. But I'll, so I'll check his. Then we'll. Yeah, then I can use some tweaking.
Well, page eleven, public defender should screen, say for a hundred times right there. Twelve, I have something there. Thirteen, nothing. And page fifteen, on the bill. The year-to-date is ninety-nine, fifty-four, are we going to have enough to page the year? See that, when I look on page fifteen, how much is going to be?
I questioned previously that, around page fourteen fifty.
Right, right.
The nineteen thousand, six ninety-five, I questioned why that was there, what was that for?
That's for the car.
Okay.
That's for the Malibu.
Very good, all right.
And then we did a supplement to that budget last, a couple of weeks ago. And we took that out of the here's money.
So I should finish the year okay. Page sixteen, I think we, second blue was sharing with us. Seventeen, nothing, let's find eight, I was kidding Jay, I said, man, your button looks good, we should. What are you trying to do? And page eighteen, yes, always good.
I have, I have a question on that, why are we seeing a decrease?
That's what, that's the letter that we got from Game Division Parks. And it's, that's what they based it off of, so.
You only asked for that?
That's, yeah, that's what they're.
Page one, sheriff department.
Why would he, repairs and maintenance, ask for zero this year?
I think we missed it. So I will check on that one, and we'll add it because.
That's the only question.
That's on twenty?
Apparently, apparently he didn't think he was gonna have any repairs and maintenance, but. You know, that's not gonna happen.
No, but the previous history.
Page twelve, not improved, but did this fifteen thousand dollars last year for?
So. That's gonna be.
Page twenty-two, jail. She can improve there thirty-two thousand dollars, so.
Something wages. So. We have to all pay.
How rates are up currently? Blue insurance help, five thousand. Zero supplies, care provision is help, five thousand. Up to eleven thousand on third chair. Yes, so, so the queue are in the short term, in the budget, I'm only gonna make this be kind of a trust fund, say a free trust fund. Not increasing, increasing, it's not, it's adding a person that should have already. Page twenty-four, four, there.
Just gotta get a wonder, a lot more dent on a company. We get a lot of outside things on.
Yeah, I'm sure that the ability, you know, one or two.
Right now.
Care.
This one, that one, sure, I'm out too there.
Just that.
Four thousand dollars.
And it probably comes for, you know, full time, sure. Kept everything else pretty well.
Juvenile, page twenty-six. Up seven thousand.
That's two charges.
Keep the backtrack going, just a couple of. You have, we only need two a day, this thing might be. Four weeks, seven grand, okay. Well, they questioned, she's got five.
They're about to call.
We never did, we didn't pass.
You don't have to.
Absolutely.
I would like to do something better.
She gets back.
Fifty years. I need one of those.
Question, four, zero.
Twenty, twenty-seven? Oh, I thought you said with piece two.
Twenty-one? Nurses.
I was very, now I'm ready.
The year-to-date is at thirty-six, and now the people have, they're, they're, they're seventy, two, a year.
But some of the, well.
Did you put the brakes on? And then all the attention.
Some of that is one time, here.
Okay, are you on, uh, one nine? You got a, got a page twenty-eight, that, that one, two, zero.
I think that's there.
Now, page twenty-nine. You know, expended for the year twenty twenty-one is thirty-six thousand, six, six, thirty-six thousand, sixty-six thousand, right? Is it, if you double that? Just right there, would be seventy-two thousand. That's a ten grand more than we, than budgeted for this year.
Do you think you're gonna be short this year?
On the nurses?
Yeah. Is there some of this one time?
The insurance would be one time, um, you're not gonna double the professional fees, that's only, you pay that off.
See, so good.
I think that'll be fine.
All right, page thirty-one, WIC, that's good.
I have a question on that, why, under WIC insurance, uh, they, you know, didn't do anything, expended for nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and then it'll back up to, uh, four thirty?
Well, we budgeted for thirty last year, but we, that's, that's for the liability insurance on the employees, and. I guess we, we take both Carol and Amber out of the nurses one, so.
Okay, very good, no questions.
And page thirty-three.
What we'd like to do, what we can do, is do the same thing, because I don't think, again.
We can't afford anyone, and the last three years.
Yes, my opinion, I do, but.
One, one thing you do, you could be aware of, is how much we're spending on the building. I should have that figured out, taking my time. Okay, and then we, L, page thirty-three, okay there, slight increase. We're, we're running under budget for the year. Bill coming up.
For, budget, twenty, twenty-two, thirty-four, seven. Twenty-four, you almost got twenty-four.
If they're taking an increase. The letter that we have received from the human service agency.
Page thirty.
Five.
What's the difference here, Doug, between general health? Page thirty-three and thirty-five?
Okay, the mental health center. Is the, um, from the human service agency, the behavioral health programs, and the serenity health program, those two add up together.
This is water town?
Yes.
I just wanna know his question, which is, are you the?
Thirty-eight, money there, okay there.
Back up to thirty-six, I have a question, mental illness board members, why do we not budget anything, you know, for, what would they, Gordon and Aaron, what, what do you take it out of?
I take that out, we take that out of the mental ill services on page thirty-three.
So why do we even have this?
Well, we used to have a board, and, and we haven't had a mental illness board where we had, um, over the years, you know, we used to have two members. This one, we probably could just get rid of that. Get rid of that in our system, you know, delete it.
Yeah, I mean, you're not taking, yeah, I would delete it, delete that.
Being we haven't had any activity there for many years.
Delete the activity.
Could delete it.
Page seven, zero, thirty-eight. Fair, uh, thirty-nine, okay, so, hold on.
Um, on the, page thirty-nine, four H building utilities. Um, two thousand twenty, we had spent forty-five thousand, this year we only spent sixteen hundred, seems like so small.
And a lot of times if the, you know, Jill, Jill kind of decides, and she spends up bills, and I think a lot of times the. Four H leaders, pay some of those expenses if they have them, so.
Okay, all right.
Forty, extension.
What's the extension?
Is that ex-plea H that?
So what is, what is it?
For the new extension agents, it's going to cost them a ton of money, ten thousand dollars.
I think Amber, she was supposed to be coming.
There's a one forty-two, forty-three is the lead.
Should you be looking at?
Nothing, they're not down, but that's the mountain, hopefully, we're gonna get more, how is that?
But I always gotta look at that use.
Yeah, to define some of the cheaper, you know, it doesn't buy, or when it's stink, it's late. That's available, why do you think, that's just my opinion, I don't know. If you had mine one, I wouldn't be opposed to it.
Did, did Bill get that a paper?
No, I haven't, I haven't do that too. But, uh, and what do we advertise it at, at, as far as pay?
Same pay as.
Yeah.
What is that, now, or? I guess he's got to have increases on the years.
We started at twenty-five, right?
Twenty or twenty-five? I think we're at twenty. I mean, is that something?
I think you gotta, hell, it's time five.
I think you're gonna have to, then, uh, make a little section there that you had certain part, I think, certificate section.
I'll get something ready, you guys can look at it.
Yes. I'm gonna remember, it's like five, it's, I see that's a few supervisor. Just to have, I mean, maybe. Just to have, I mean, every...
Playing Johnny? Is that my real name? My own job, wait, salary, kind of my real name.
Yep.
What happens if she does come up and says, hey, get a full-time job? I have a big, kind of like, isn't it?
Deal with it if it happens.
I, I usually don't want it to happen, is she thinks it's just a full-time permanent part-time job, she says, I got a full-time job. All of a sudden she's turned in her notice. Not good organization, who's taking...
You know, especially if she can help in the compensation department, I think that's a lot of... Not, not due to the knowledge of...
Yeah, I think so too. Sounds like they're pretty close. Husband retired a few years ago, they're all here. So people can ask me either, what did?
Yansin, Yansin, Eunson.
Well, they did.
That gets very, Yansin, Ken Yansin. There's a mountain. You got Gary Yansin, Tim Yansin. What's Eunson?
Jim.
Jim, yeah.
Oh, so that's all over here, people would...
Resale.
Seriously?
Does that old man need a cheap? Does that old man need a...
Yeah, Jim. That's Jim, the one that sells the wife from Young Wife.
One big speculation.
Sixty-one shoes.
Okay. Just a little more, I didn't do it then, it's wrong.
He what?
I want to get out of here.
Oh, aren't you having fun? Tourism, zero.
Page forty-eight, nothing. Forty-nine, transfers and...
Tourism is early, is that?
You know more about page forty-nine. Nothing to comment there. Page fifty.
Um, page forty-nine, the general fund transfer out, that may change. If you guys, you know, if, if you guys still change a couple of things.
So is that a question to balance the budget?
No, that's what we will have to transfer, transfer out of general fund, like for the highway vehicles.
I hope we don't make a mistake, just to supplement that budget, yes.
Hey, last week, you were spending money, you were spending money.
Yes. And on that budget, um, go to bridge supplies and materials. I think we need to keep it up.
Correct. One point five.
Page fifty-one.
It is, and it was like that, like two.
Okay, the pencil marks, yeah, pencil marks or pads, but, but the original... That you would have in a split. We just put it, we just plugged in his numbers. So you have one that says that six seventeen.
And, and what you plugged in, to keep the page fifty-one, that claim count includes that dollars an hour?
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, that's... Because it's not my decision to be...
Okay, if we keep, you know, I use that and keep it current, but I can't see oil, it's gonna be insane. It might, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, there's so many...
It's not, not, but so, what's we know? That's just a food, I think.
We realize, you know, but it's same, I would tend not say, we take the rigging, I have to supplement, you know, on this side of it.
So if we back, if we go back to what we first put in for wages, that would, I mean, that would save... That would supremely save basically this budget.
So two would go across out, because that was like the original number?
That's what we do.
That saved you twenty grand.
Yeah. What, that's what we do, we, we plug in the wages, because we don't need these wages here and there and everywhere. And, uh, so that's how we...
Well, that six seventeen should say six oh two.
Six oh two, eight and five. So then that lessens, you know, like your other things too.
Yeah, so that changes everything down to the first.
So, so do you want us to go, you want me to go back down to what we had originally?
I'm gonna add on the, since these wages have to be closed, or if I take a red one off, we gotta pick up.
Again, some of these one-time things, a lot of our peers, they actually, you know, feel like it is, you know, like the week, if there was something around the time.
Well, I mean, if you look at, if I threw the fuses out of the jail too, there's, there could be a jail that's...
All right, I threw out the supplies and materials, taking that down, I can add...
To what, babe?
The supplies and materials.
Just named last year's, yeah.
So you, one point five?
Oh, I know, I just did that up, I did it at the board.
Well, George, twenty twenty, you spent under a million, twenty nineteen, you spent about a million, so...
That's a separate.
More be spent. So if we were at a million five, that's still five hundred more than, it's almost fifty percent more than... Spending more.
Six hundred point four five.
What did you say?
Four point five.
Yeah, is that what you want?
Line four point six.
We need just a white paper, five hundred thousand.
And then you rip it to eighty dollars, except...
No, 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 he said... Pick up and he was gonna trade.
Trade off, yeah.
Fifteen rent money.
Or smaller equipment and pickup.
I'm sure you bought that old road gear thing.
I rode me a deer.
Road gear, it's a river road gear.
Twenty seven.
They used to do that.
I, I guess it might be short personality, not...
Thirteen, thirteen people, I hear.
That in the summertime, in the wintertime, you gotta go.
Is there any other place on there that you would want? See, we did, one, one thing that, that two hundred and fifty thousand on the discovery group one, we didn't have that. We didn't budget anything for two thousand twenty-one.
That's kind of a sneeze, because we're gonna get...
We'll be getting that back, but it's, it's good to have it in there, because that's about what we'll have left out of there.
Fifty four hundred revenue, same.
Right.
So what else? You trim off of it. Page fifty-three, already got it. And that, and that should be... Another one.
I have a question, why are we seeing, um, a twenty-five thousand decrease in salary from twenty-one to, to twenty-two? I'm just curious.
We're only gonna take two dispatch, two dispatchers out of that. Um, to make it a little bit closer, because otherwise we end up supplementing that, we've been taking three dispatchers out of that fund. But for the amount of revenue that we get... You know, thirty-nine one one fund, we got like eighty-nine thousand.
Okay.
So that, that was kind of one thing that we decided we would do. So that's part of the decrease of that.
And then under telephone utilities, four twenty-eight?
Yeah.
We budgeted twenty-two thousand a year, and we've only paid out about forty-eight hundred.
Yeah.
And then twenty, we only paid about eighty-six, so...
So we could back that one down, I can look, look that over, babe.
Okay.
We'll back, back down.
And we budgeted eighteen, nineteen, we risk around the twenty, some thousand.
Yeah, and a lot of times Christie kind of looked at what we budgeted in twenty-one and just went through it.
All right, so, so we can back that twenty-two thousand off?
Yeah. And on the emergency management, I am checking on that.
I, okay. Because if I see another bill come through on that, I hope we both forgot to pay it. It can't be nothing thousand dollars.
Right. That's a twenty-four seven.
It'll be, uh, seven thousand dollar increase there in salaries, is that? Is that more than my...
You taking one and a half out of there?
Yeah, I think she was taking all the chondras out of there instead of just half. I'll check with Christie. That's saying it might be one for the expert needs.
All right, all right, just curious, on our jail transportation, why that go up about ten thousand? Evidently it goes up every year, looks like.
The fee was gone.
Yeah, it looks like.
Yeah. Manfield, a mom, I heard, that health insurance, we didn't hit that, really did not hit there too.
The idea ain't got about the kitchen yet.
Yeah, well, I haven't heard.
Christie says those people working within the system are, there's no way that's true.
Whoever returned them are...
I saw, I see Kayla, I see Kayla footwork every day now. Kayla, because she got off my way.
Did you say you got the water done yesterday?
Yeah.
Oh, twenty-three.
I had no idea that...
Every other, see, and then I run up, because I was... Whether making roads, you know, and you chop.
He rolls up. I wish we had...
Now, somebody said that it's very transmission, wants to, wants to finish more.
It's full, it's full, yeah. Guess that, I guess it, whatever it was. You had that board taking that one anyway, huh?
I haven't heard a word on that. So, so...
Not a word.
What was, what was the fee, fee that we were going to try to shore the license?
Fifteen hundred?
Page that, waiting for us, she...
I'm starved.
You have any...
Yeah, we were breaking some pretty close.
Yeah, I know, we're getting down, but you're tired. I interrupted, they're calling my wife, they're telling her data's slow down. Yeah, I hope they fix those things, too, that most of the... Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, well, yeah, it's like, yeah. Well, they're gonna black out, they're gonna cross, cut the... They're gonna get on their own, they're gonna place, they're insane now, isn't that... Let's do it, let's do it, down to one lane. Hold on, what?
We did vote.
I, I think we have roll call.
What kind of rolls?
This last term was brought to you by Dakota Monit Drift, Royer, On Neads, Countryside Aid, Assisted Living, and Memory Care. In Rosalt, where your family is our family, First Savings Bank of Sisseton. Use our online banking to save you time. Stillson Service in Sisseton with Marathon Fields. Tri-State Water in Sisseton for all your water needs, water sufferers and reverse osmosis right here in Sisseton. And, of course, the Sisseton Courier, where we do more than the weekly newspaper. Thanks for watching, and have a great day.
How much is it gonna rain tonight?